I don't, I don't know what the rush is. I hope there isn't a rush. I know that for some people who are very focused on these things, you know, they've been pouring their hearts and souls into it, but I could use more time on a lot of these things to absorb it, to make sure that, and I, I agree with you, I, um, just because other cities, we compare with other cities and, and there's a sense in which that makes sense to me, but I also think that that doesn't necessarily mean that's the way to go. Um, I, I also know in these economic times, when has gas, in my entire lifetime been as high as it is now, and I remember the 1970s, I'm old enough to remember the gas lines. I'm old enough to remember my father turning off the lights in every room, you know, behind us because of the energy thing that was happening at the same time. This is a repeat of that era, only worse. So raising fees of any kind and every kind, to me, it's like this could not, how do I say this? This could not come at a worse time or, or a more difficult time for the average citizen who's struggling like mad every time they go to the grocery stores. And I speak as an average citizen and also one who's trying to, um, run a restaurant in these times.
So can I clear something up? Today's is just the methodology?
Yes.
Not the cost.
Okay.
Okay, so, but I, I just wanted to make sure you knew that. That's all.
Yeah, I understand that it's the methodology, but I think it's the methodology we're discussing because we're saying maybe there's a better methodology. Maybe there's a better way to go about this.
Agreed.
And I also, I've mentioned this in the past, which, you know, Janet still also brought up is the fact that we have a lot of parks that we have not the budget to maintain. Who doesn't love parks? I mean, everybody loves parks. Everybody wants maximal livability, but financially, we have to live within our means. That's all I'm saying. We need to live within our means. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Olson?
Uh, yeah. Uh, I think my point in looking at other cities is that somebody's got to pay the cost. And, um, should developers pay the cost or should homeowners pay the cost? People that are already here? And I've been doing some walking around, talking to people about the situation with schools and central school in particular. And I've come across people who are moving away, moving out of state because they feel they can't afford to live here anymore. So.
And yet you're willing to raise prices.
So should we pay with our tax money or should the developers pay?
Well, I think, you know,
It's a question.
It's not a question?
I'm not beating up.
That's a, that's a good question, but I would have an answer, so.
You say you don't have an answer?
No, I knew. I thought you didn't want me to do that. So he didn't ask.
So any other council have anything? So, so I was in the meeting, the initial meeting way back when I first got elected regarding SDCs and tiering SDCs. And, um, I, I believe this should be for me, should be along the lines of our, what we propose in for Public Works. Uh, and the employee thing I struggle with because I am an employer and I would hate to have to pay money for somebody I'm already paying for. For, you know, not, not even my building and the owner's going to transfer that cost to me, you know, so, um, I do have issues with this and I was actually going to have it pulled off the agenda for Wednesday and I still might. Uh, I think, first of all, I didn't know that this was on the county city's website and you had it before we did. So I think that we should have received this month ago when it was done or whenever it was done, so we could prepare for this discussion. And I felt, I mean, and Ray will, and Marilyn will attest that I was quite upset about that. So, um, I think we should delay this until we get a chance to dig more into it. That's my thought. Counselor Olson?
What I'm, I'm, what I'm thinking is, um, thank you, Janet, for agreeing right up front that the SDCs are, uh, underfunded and have been for almost probably since day one. And that's the elephant in the room. How do we get it back to the point where they're not underfunded? Uh, and moving forward, if and, if and when new parks do come in to play that we have some resources to help with those and, uh, in the meantime, because we don't have any new parks on schedule that I'm aware of, uh, that we can start working on the parks that are already here that everybody likes. I think that's part of what makes a community. So, um, I firmly agree that SDCs do need to be raised. Uh, how, and that, how that scalability works, that's the discussion that we'll have the next time around. So.
Yeah.
Well, again, a 335% increase
Yeah.
is
Ray, turn your mic on.
way over the top.
It is on.
It is on, yeah.
He did one of these.
Peter, go ahead, Peter. City manager.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And, and I, I too appreciate Janet's acknowledgement of the fact that SDCs need to be, uh, increased. Um, what I was going to say is you wait until you hear from the staff. A lot of these points will be made, um, addressed. Um, and there has been plenty of notification that has gone out. We've been considering parks SDCs for over a year now. So again, I would just suggest that you, uh, hear from, uh, Kim and Chris and then resume the questions and, uh, debate.
Okay. Thank you, Janet. Uh, next on the agenda is the Public Works fees, inflationary adjustments by Rob Emmons, and he'll be presenting via Zoom, I understand. Are you going to do it, Director Bailey? Just kidding. You know, it's coming. So is Rob still going to do his presentation though? Okay. Has he logged in? Oh, there he is.
Yes, yes. So I hope everyone can hear me better this time.
Yes, you sound way better.
Great, great. We got the, we got the, the audio issue figured out. So, um, well, I get the fun of presenting fee increases. So I, you know, based on, on what we were just, uh, discussed, um, may not be the, the favorite topic now, but, but I'm going to talk about here in the next few minutes, uh, Public Works fees and, um, how we come to council every spring to discuss, uh, inflationary increases and other adjustments council has recommended in the past. So I have a quick, about 10 slide PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to share my screen here. If you can go over, look at some of the charts so we all have that visual of what we're, what we're discussing. So. It should be coming up here.
We have it. Uh, you are not in slideshow mode.
Yep, gonna go right there.
Excellent.
Okay, so, um, so like I said, every spring we come before council and talk about public works fees and, um, and those adjustments. So this year, I think this is probably not a surprise to everyone that the inflationary increase this year, uh, is 12%. And that is based on an April to April, um, this, this year would be April 21 to April 22, Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index for the Northwest. And as Janet, uh, Janet made reference to that as well. So that's kind of an industry standard to use the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. And we, uh, for the Northwest, uh, use the city of Seattle and tracks that data. So in the past, there has been some questions about, well, is, is Seattle the right city to be, to be using to caught, to track inflation? My answer to that is, is yes. And, and to really, the, the reason for that is, is what that measures. So what they E and R Construction Cost Index measures is the change in the cost of materials and labor for the Northwest. It doesn't measure the cost of construction for Seattle. So that's just a nuance to, to, to keep in mind that, uh, the E and R really covers the cost of, or measures the cost of materials and labor for the Northwest, basically inflation. So. With that said, there are two categories of fees that Public Works is, is in charge of. The utility connection charges, which includes the post-construction stormwater quality fees and the system development charges. So let's take a look quickly at the connection charges. In the past, we've kind of zoomed by this, this slide, um, or this, this category. And I want to focus on it just, uh, just quickly, uh, to remind everyone what connection fees cover. And why do we charge connection fees? Really a connection fee is charged when a new development makes a new connection to the existing utility system. So we are basically recovering with this fee, we are recovering costs that the great payers have already spent to construct the minimum size of existing utility. So, um, that's it. Just wrapped up nice and neat, uh, in a nutshell. Shows the various uh, fees and utility systems on the left-hand column. Middle column are the current fees. And in the right-hand column are the fees with the 12% inflation added. So the next are the system development charges. Public Works is in charge of water, wastewater and transportation SDCs. Again, we have the current fee shown here in, close to the middle with the inflationary 12% added to that fee. And one of the middle columns there on the very right-hand column. If you remember correctly, or if you remember back in 2019, uh, we presented new fees for water and for wastewater. Those fees represented a pretty big increase over the existing fees at that time. And council recommended not to charge those, those new fees all at once, but to phase those new fees in, in five equal steps. So today we've taken two of those steps and this year, if we decide to take the next phase increase would be the third step. And that's what this column shows here is the inflationary and the third step. Notice for transportation, there isn't a phase step. We, uh, we are not phasing in that fee. That's been in place for a bit. So with that, here is a slide that takes a look at just a few other communities that surround us. We have, um, total SDC for these communities shown in this, one of the middle columns here. And, and note that this column is all of the SDCs those communities charge. So for Albany, although Public Works, um, is not in charge of Parks SDCs, we, these numbers here do include, uh, Parks SDCs, just so we can compare apples to apples with other communities. So you can see there's quite a range, high 28,000, low of Sweet Home to 1,800. And those are just, you know, decisions that count, their councils have made in the past, what kind of projects they have in their master plans, what kind of methodologies they have. Uh, kind of a whole wide range of why those fees are vary so much. So if you look in the middle column here, this is the medium home value for each one of these communities. That's based off information from Zillow and their, their market research. It's the median value. And then in the right-hand column, um, the percentage of SDC to the median home value. It goes all the way from six down to a half a percent. So, um, one thing to take a look at here is what, uh, the bold numbers representing Albany. The bottom here is 3.3% um, for our current fees. You know, if we just adjust the fees for inflation, that's 3.6%. And if we take the next phase adjustment added, inflation added to that, it's 3.75. So, um, still below some of the other communities, but again, you know, we're right there in the mix. So this next slide can be a little confusing and before we kind of turn it back to council and for you guys to deliberate, um, I want to take a look at what, what, um, I'm calling missed revenue or, uh, what if revenue? Uh, this is new information that's not included in the council packet. Before what you've seen, it's been in the council packet. You've taken, seen that before. These next two slides, um, are, is new information that you don't have. Um, again, it's just what I'm calling kind of missed SDC revenue or what if revenue, kind of what if we were charging a higher SDC fee, um, what kind of revenue would we be collecting? So if you remember, um, back in 2019, for water SDC revenue, we decided to phase in the revenue. I mean, phase in the recommended fee in five equal steps. And here's the revenue that we have received in the last three fiscal years. I think in 2019 was the first phase in step. In 2020, we did not phase in a step. And then 2021, we took the second step and this year we recommended to take the third. So that's the revenue and the total is 1.5 million on the right-hand side. So what happens if we charge the maximum allowable SDC fee beginning back in 2019? And we did not phase that in. We just started collecting the, the whole maximum allowable fee. Here's the revenue for each year with a total 1.8 million. And, uh, this bottom is just a total, basically it's about a quarter of a million dollars more, um, revenue that we could be putting towards projects. And then that's, that's a little, that's a little, that this is easier to understand. Wastewater is a little bit more difficult because wastewater, if you remember, um, we not only are phasing in the fee, but in 2019, when we presented the fee to council, it was a very large increase. Council at that time decided to make a funded and unfunded list, meaning, um, uh, the fee that they would recommend would be reduced because we're not including all of the projects that needed to be constructed as part of the master plan. So there was a reduced fee based on a reduced project list. So, um, so there's a couple of different scenarios to go over in wastewater. So this top row is revenue we've collected based on our existing fees, uh, as they've been phased in. This next row are revenue, just like water, we would have received if we did not phase in that reduced fee. It's about 3.7 million dollars. The next row is what if we charged the maximum allowable fee and did not create a funded and unfunded list and decided to fund all of the projects and collect that maximum allowable fee? And this is the revenue for each of the last three years with the total. And this bottom row just shows the total, uh, for each one of those two categories. So I know that's a lot of numbers, um, and I kind of like, okay, gee whiz, that's a, that's a lot of numbers and kind of what if? Um, I just, I guess the whole point of that was just to, to know that there are ramifications to, to not collecting, uh, the maximum allowable fee and, and ramifications to phasing fees in. Not saying that's good or bad. It's just that there's some revenue that, that, uh, we're not receiving. So, um, so with that, I'll circle back to SDCs, um, and the, one of the decisions that's before you with inflationary adjustments or a phase in shown, shown here. So I've probably talked enough, so I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Johnson, and I'd be happy to, to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much for, for presentation.
I'm going to stop sharing the screen. I think that, that the charts, everything, all the counselors have in. I'm going to stop sharing the screen. I think that the charts, everything, all the councillors have in front of them.
Good. Thank you. I'm going to start with Councillor Novak on this end.
Okay, thanks. Again, this is going to be basic SDC 101 review because I need to hear it more than once. On the public utility SDCs, this is, we're only looking at people who are currently here in homes paying every month their utility bills, right? Or is this taking into consideration new homes like the Parks SDCs? Can you clarify that for me first, please?
So for, as far as the revenue that we are collecting?
Yes, and that you'd like to be collecting or that you're leaving on the table by not, I need to understand that.
Yeah, so the revenue that we are collecting is only for development that has occurred. So those are revenue that we've collected from homes and from businesses and industries that have actually constructed physical properties. So that's not revenue we would collect, kind of what if, what if other development happened? That's actual revenue from actual construction.
Thank you.
Councillor Kobsduski was next.
I think that was the question I was going to make, I was going to address that that's exactly what Rob said. Is it for developments already happened? It's not that it's going to be happening. Oops. Okay, talk in the microphone, but I'll just reiterate what Rob said, that he answered the question that I was going to bring up.
But what we're suggesting here, if I may, is an inflationary increase on all of these utilities SDCs of 12%. Is that correct?
Yes, but I think that's what I heard as well, but Councillor Smith had something.
I'm wholly confused. SDCs are charged to new development only for buildings that are being built. Not these, we're not talking about increases for ratepayers, yeah, for people who pay their water and sewer bill. This is for people, these are for new homes or new, other new development that's being constructed. It's not monthly bills.
Thank you. I needed that.
So so is councillors, we're on the same page, right? It's for new build, new development, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Any councillors, anything else?
I have a question.
Please.
So if we're asking developers and individuals to come to Albany, move to Albany, but we're going to charge you this rate because we need to fund these things. First, my first question is, once they have a house, then they're paying utilities for the rest of the time that they live there. But if we can't get them to build the house, then you've missed some income. So to my mind, and I'm just speaking. So from my perspective, if you want people to build and you want more homes, small homes, medium homes, anything that the state's telling us you must do, whatever, you want more homes, but we make it more expensive, it's, I know I've said this before. An SDC in that sense is similar to a tax, and we all know when you tax something, you get less of it. So to my mind, we want them to come, we want them to hook up to all of our utilities when we have a customer for life, who will, it's that reimbursement because now for every month, every month, they're going to be paying sewer, water, wastewater, all these things. I should think we might try making it more attractive, just like that Flanagan or whatever her name was, she sent two letters from Hanson Homes or whatever it was talking about. See, to my mind, if you want to grow, you don't say, "Come here and we're raising the price on everything, and I know you have to raise prices to..." I'm just, it's counter, my head is a little bit exploding because you want people to build, and we want them to be a customer and to pay every month. If you want them to build and you'll get your money back every month when they pay these bills, I should think we would want to make it as little cost as possible to the developer, to the homeowner, to get here in the first place. And then you've got them, you've got them and they're paying.
So we agree. I think that the tiered SDCs that we see with Public Works is more of the mindset that I was having in that it costs less to build a smaller home. I think we're all in agreement, that's what we want to do? We pretty much agree with that? Okay. So Councillor Besty was first, Councillor Johnson was first, then Uncle Councillor Olson.
My idea of what SDCs are, and I agree with Janet, I mean, I've been here 20 years and I still can't quite figure them out. But the SDCs are new construction, and that's, it's included in the sale of the house. So in other words, it's not like you're adding on and charging the person, whatever, afterwards. It's like, we have a development going just two houses down from me, okay? It's four houses. And of course, the builder complains of SDCs, and they're really high. But he's going to include that in the sale of the house. So it really, it's not like they, the person buying has to come up with like the 12,000 or 24,000 or whatever it takes. It's averaged over the mortgage or whatever they do. So it's not like we're continuing, you know, to sock it to the customer, the people, the owner. You know, it's just a price of building, that's all it is. And we have been very generous, I think, with our SDCs.
Well, on one end, right? So where SDCs are high, where SDCs are high, they're going to build big homes, get a return on investment.
Well, that's the way we're going to do it.
We're going to write, it's going to be, now it's 1,000 square foot, costs the same as a 3,000 square foot. The goal is to make it so it's cheaper to build small homes.
Right, but it's still included in the selling of the business or the property. So I just want to kind of clarify that because it is confusing, like we're going to just continue on. And then, oh, by the way, we're going to charge them utility, you know, utility, like water, sewer, whatever.
Because the person that buys the house actually pays the city utilities, right?
Right, as they go on, as they get into their house, and then that's part of their life.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Councillor Olson?
Yes, I think I'm saying the same thing that people have been saying here. But the point is, if you want to lower the SDCs so you have more houses built, and then you want to count on the people that are in the houses to pay that cost, the only way you can do it is to raise the water rates or have some kind of a bond measure for the streets. Or so that we got water, we got and sewer, we'd have to raise sewer rates if we lowered the SDC. So no matter how you cut it, somebody has to pay for it. And the question is, do we want the ratepayers to pay for development? That's, ratepayers are you and me and people that live in the city, not the people that live in Millersburg, but the people that live in Albany. Or do we want the developers to pay for it at the beginning and then let the people that buy the houses or whatever pay it in their mortgages? And I think the latter, the people that buy the properties, buy the houses, have them pay the cost of the privilege of living in Albany.
I think we're all in agreement with that. Let me go and see what Director Bailey has to say.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to try to put this into real impacts, so I think it'll be helpful. If you remember, I think it was in February, we, at a work session, I presented the annual rate increases for water and sewer, stormwater. And one of the things we have to do in water and sewer is we have debt that we have to pay. When that debt was taken out, a certain portion of it was allocated to future growth. Because for instance, we built the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant was not sized for the conditions in 2009 when it was built. That would be silly. It would be immediately undersized if we only built it for the immediate need. It was sized for a 20-year need, so we don't have to come back and build a new treatment plant every year. So we calculated the portion of that cost that was allocated to future growth. Whatever percentage that was, the debt that is being paid on that loan, that percentage was allocated to be paid by SDCs. Because SDCs, by definition, are an increased impact to our system, okay? So we were supposed to be collecting this SDC revenue to pay that portion of the sewer debt. Well, SDC revenue is highly unpredictable because it depends on development. And it is not as simple as if our SDCs are lower, people will build more. That's not, that's not how that calculation works. But it is one factor that the city can influence, so it is important. In the end, sewer SDC revenue did not come in high enough for the sewer SDC programs to pay their fair share of debt. So now every year when we make our debt payment on the sewer loan, ratepayers are paying their portion of that wastewater treatment facility and almost all of the future growth portion of the wastewater facility debt. Because we don't have enough SDC revenue from the new customers, from the new development that is available to pay that loan. So every time we aren't collecting enough SDC revenue, ratepayers have to pay more for these costs that the council originally decided should be borne by growth. So in, right now, what that has equated to is we had to raise sewer rates 2% this year to keep up with our costs, our forecasted costs for next year, I think it was 2%. I don't remember, but I believe it was 2%. The amount of debt that should be paid by SDC is more than 1%. So if we, if SDCs were paying their fair share, that's over a percent that we would not have to raise sewer rates. So there are real impacts when you're talking about, we don't want to raise SDCs because it's expensive or they're high. And it's a little bit disingenuous to compare Albany's SDCs to other communities because our SDCs are unique to us, they are unique to our master plans, they are unique to our needs, they are unique to our growth, and they are unique to how you decide the city should pay for that. It is 100% in your ball, in your court, the ball is in your court, to make SDCs as low as you want to make them. I would not advise that because what you're doing is transferring that burden onto the ratepayers. And then we're going to have super, super high monthly bills. They're already high, if you ask anybody who has an opinion about that. But every time we have, because the thing is, is we can't not build the next part of the system. We can't not maintain the system, okay? We can't not replace pipes, and we can't not build the next cell at the water treatment plant that we need for the next 10,000 people that move here. That project will be done, okay? It has to be done. So who's going to pay for it? Right now, the Cox Creek Interceptor is a perfect example. The Cox Creek Interceptor is eligible for 50% of the cost of that $5.2 million project this summer to be paid for by SDCs. We do not have $2.75 million in SDC revenue, so who's paying for that? Well, it turns out ARPA is paying for it, but if we didn't have ARPA, ratepayers would be paying for it. Okay, so every time we don't have enough SDC revenue, there is a legitimate impact that happens. And if you want that project to be built, I mean, the option is we don't build the project and the system falls apart. That's really not a good option. So if you want those projects to happen, and we don't have adequate SDC revenue, we either have to go out and borrow, we have to hope for money from the federal government, maybe we can apply for grants, or we raise rates. So that's what happens. So the question about, yes, the SDC is paid upfront, it's included in the cost of the home. For instance, if it's a single-family residential home, if it's a commercial or industrial development, it's included in their startup costs because they're having an impact on our system. It's very complicated, and I just cannot simplify it enough. And then they pay, that person or whoever buys the house is going to pay their monthly bill. And so, you know, I had this discussion with the developer. You should be happy I'm building this subdivision because I'm creating more customers for your system. So I shouldn't therefore have to pay SDCs because you're going to get all this money every month from these customers. And the other thing is that there's completely different things. Rates are for operating and delivering that service to you today. SDCs are for the capital investment, the capital investment that's already been made that allows you to connect because that system is there and has room for you, you're welcome, and also the capital need in the future. That's what SDCs are for. SDCs won't pay for operating costs, they can't by law. So I don't know if I answered anybody's question, but I think it's important that you understand that SDC revenue affects what we can do in our system. And we already have a problem in the sewer system. It's manageable, but we don't have, you know, excess money in sewer capital. We're really picking and choosing our projects every year. We don't have enough money. But we're hesitant to ask for more money for ratepayers. And SDC revenue is based on a master plan with defined project costs and defined funding amounts. So anyway, I'll get off my soapbox, but hopefully that was clear, helped clear some things up.
Councillor Kobsduski.
Thank you, Chris, for mentioning the growth happening. It's going to happen. I've been saying it for years, it's inevitable. It's how we manage it. I'm getting some pushback. It's, people don't believe that we're planning well enough for it or planning at all for it, et cetera. I have yet to have a single contractor over the years, and I remember sitting out at that position before I even got on council, addressing the need to raise SDCs. And I could feel arrows in my back from contractors sitting behind me at that point in time. I have yet to have a single contractor tell me face-to-face that they have lost a bid or they weren't able to sell a home or a project because of the SDCs. It was already been mentioned, I think Councillor Olson probably mentioned it, or Councillor Johnson mentioned it. That's built into the cost, and they're going to price their buildings, projects accordingly. And people are going to continue to move here, and they have been. And so somebody that's going to be buying a very expensive home, they're not going to give a rip about what the SDCs costs are. They're going to buy the home or the project. And so I think we need to radically raise the SDC costs just to get back into some reasonable parity. I'm done.
Sir?
Yes, go ahead.
I really appreciate hearing it again. Every time I hear it, it helps a little bit. I definitely don't want to see, or I want to see as little increase on ratepayers as humanly possible for reasons that I mentioned earlier. You mentioned grants. Are there grants for this sort of thing? I mean, to help with?
Largely no. So it might be a different story in parks, and I'm sure Kim can address that. In water and sewer and stormwater infrastructure, there are very few grants available for these types of infrastructure projects.
Is the federal government doing anything to help with infrastructure?
Well, we have the new infrastructure IIJA or Bill, I think it's the same thing, Act that was just passed. And that is introducing a whole lot of money. But it's coming through the state revolving fund loan programs for water and wastewater. So those are still debt. They are working on the rules. So some of those programs might be, some of those funds might be more available in terms of forgivable loan than, in a higher percentage than was previously. But every time you take out debt, whether it's a bond, so like for streets, for instance, we've done bonds for street capital projects, or loans, you have to secure that with a dedicated source of revenue. So general obligation bonds, for instance, are generally secured by the full faith and credit of the city, which includes property tax revenue, which we, you know, so there's the general fund for you. Or water or sewer fund revenue. So anytime we take out debt, we have to demonstrate to the loaning agency that we can afford that debt, and it usually comes with prescribed rates. So we have to commit to rate increases that will go up enough to support that debt or that there is sufficient excess revenue to support the additional annual debt payment for that. So yes, there's more federal money coming in for infrastructure, a lot of money for infrastructure, which is great. But it still comes in the form of debt for the most part.
Thank you.
It's also one time, right?
Sure, yeah. I mean, it's for capital projects, it's not for operating costs.
Mr. Mayor? If I could also ask Chris to address that most grants require match funding as well.
Oh, sure, yeah. And we don't even, I can't even tell you the last time we got a grant for any sort of water or sewer project. We occasionally get grants. We occasionally get grants for streets, so for instance, safe routes to school grants, which we've been very fortunate in getting, require usually a 20, I think it's 20%, it's either 11.67% or 20% local match. So that would come from that appropriate fund. So in that case, the street capital fund might end up paying 20% of a sidewalk project instead of the full cost. So we, we have gotten some of those types of projects.
And Mr. Mayor, may I also clear up one thing? That the cost of a new home to a buyer is determined not by SDCs or anything else, it's determined by the market. We are in a free market. The demand goes up, then the cost of the house will go up. What does go up with the SDCs is the cost to the builder of building that house, but the buyer himself is not affected by SDCs.
I'm sorry, Mayor, just one more thing. I just want to be clear that these numbers that Rob presented did not include the, the scaled SDC rates that we presented a couple of weeks ago for a single-family residential. If you'll remember, there's like a, there's at least a 90-day process to get those written and published and we have to have a public hearing. So, right now, these are still, you know, for every single-family house, there's one cost. In the future, this, whatever the SDC rate that goes forward will be placed on that scale that we discussed for water or sewer.
Thanks for clearing that up. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other comments or questions? I think I'm happy with, this is based on our current structure.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, any other questions for Director Bailey? For Mr. Edmonds? I guess we're good, thank you very much. I'm sure we'll see you again on this, is that on Wednesday?
No, no, what, so this, if, if we've get, if we, if we have their approval to move forward with, with the 12% inflation and the next, next phase-in step, this will come before council on June 8th.
Counsel, will you give a nod for that? Okay, thank you. Can you bring that back on the 8th?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and for the person of the hour, Public Parks SDC Methodology and Rate Setting, Director LaDain, page 6 through 49 in your packet.
Hello, good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Director.
All right, let me see if I can get this up on the screen. Is that a screen share? I apologize, Matt, I thought I was gonna... I'm on it now. All right, is it coming up clear on all the screens? Awesome. Well, thank you for the opportunity to come for what I believe is a long-awaited return for this conversation and what I'm sure will continue to be a lively conversation. So, thank you in advance. All right, so to kind of help tell the story a little bit, because I do agree SDCs are complicated, ooh, I realize, before I get going, Doug Gabbert should be joining us virtually. Hi, Doug. Doug is with our consulting firm FCS Group that does SDC methodologies for organizations all across the state. So Doug's going to back me up and answer any of the technical questions that come up, but I wanted to go ahead and give the presentation myself in the hopes of being able to kind of tell the story with it. So, here we go. Our most recent master plan was passed back in 2001, sorry, 2021. And some of the recommendations that came out of that was to reduce deferred maintenance by investing more capital funds such as SDC reimbursement fees and to park improvements to offset impacts. And additionally, to prioritize projects that increase efficiencies and decrease costs long-term. Thankfully, the master plan was passed. We also brought a methodology back at that time, and the methodology, methodology did not get passed. As this council asked that, instead of just assigning rates regardless of what square footage was, to come back so that there would be an incentive for smaller homes to be charged a lower rate, larger homes to be charged a higher rate. And so, we went back to FCS Group and said, okay, let's rework with the methodology and, and see where it gets us. So, the group went back and was able to, to make those changes and have the science to back it up. And so, we did notice it officially in the Democrat Herald and sent out notices to those interested parties who have registered with the city 90 days ahead of time. We in fact posted the methodology in advance of the 60-day requirement on our website. So it has been out and available for folks to look at. We could have brought it back sooner, but we understood that council was going to be looking at SDCs across the board to figure out how, you know, in the hopes of having a scaled structure. And so we held off to kind of see what those conversations would look like so that we weren't coming back and then having to retool if something changed. So, that's why we're here today. So to back up, once again, I know you're hearing this a bunch of times, so I apologize, but an SDC is a one-time charge assessed on new development to pay for the costs of expanding public facilities that result from growth. This ensures that the city's quality of life keeps pace with growth and the changing community. So the methodology that we have been using with our SDCs has not changed since 1993. So, I ask you to think about what you were doing and, and your life in 1993, and I think we can all understand that a lot has changed. So, so yeah, the, the fee breakdown that we currently have with the methodology is $293.33 per bedroom plus 56 for square footage of living space. And for a 1,500-square-foot house, which is what we were using when we brought our documents for the 2021 master plan and methodology review, was based on a 1,500-square-foot house. So that, it's $1,720, which is two to three times lower than our comparable communities. You can see on the right-hand side. So the, these dollars that are collected are only for capital improvements that are there due towards brand-new growth. So if I, brand-new parks, brand-new trails, but in specific areas that deem, that, that have grown, that it's not just an additional amenity. So we're really limited on what we're able to use these funds. And so I want to just point out that the comparison of parks' SDCs, you can see Albany down at the bottom, close, behind Millersburg and Roseburg, and on the right-hand side, I know this is something we're going to chat about later, but non-residential fees. This is something that more and more communities are looking at, and I just want to point out that we are not the only ones potentially considering this. Many communities have in fact moved forward. I know also that in some of the conversations, talking about if we had just gone up the ENR of 3.2% since 1993, it would be a smaller fee. Very true. With that said, the methodology there was based on a plan for 1993 and the growth of 10,000 people to get us up to about 40,000. Our, our population was about 33,000 in 93. We are now looking to potentially serve a population of 65,000. And so, we're not talking 1993 prices anymore, we're not talking 1993 project lists anymore. It's, it, it does unfortunately, as much as I would like to say it tracks, we're, we're using apples to oranges for how we're comparing things. And if anybody has any questions, feel free to step me along the way. So our current SDC funds available, I know I've heard from folks that we have plenty of money available, and I guess that depends on what you would consider plenty of money. So as of right now, we have 2.8 million as a balance. We are only collecting SDC improvement fees, like I said, for brand-new construction. And so just to kind of give you an idea as to how that money actually can be spent, like how much that gets us. On average, we maybe collect between 4,000 to 5,000, $400,000 to $500,000 annually. And we, our last SDC project was repurposing 12 tennis, well, tennis courts at LBCC into 12 pickleball courts. That's not even brand-new construction, it is repurposing. That if we did not have SDC funds to the tune of $338,000, we would still have people playing at Hockelman Park, at a park that is, is, could use some love. And I will say that generously as the person who oversees the department. So that just, once again, it's not brand-new construction, we already own the property almost 400,000, well, over $330,000 just to get 12 pickleball courts. We are currently working towards building the first park on the east side of town since Timber Lynn, which is Timber Ridge. It's been theoretically in the works since 2008. It's a 1.8-acre park. It's potentially going to cost $1.1 million to construct a 1.8-acre park that we already own. So as I, as we say, yes, that we're collecting millions of dollars, it unfortunately costs just that, it costs that much more to build any amenity. And so, yes.
So weren't there SDCs charged to developers that built out there for the park?
Under the current system, yes. And that feeds into the 2.8 million. So, as we look at our master plan, our estimates range anywhere from just a basic neighborhood park. This isn't talking Monty, this isn't talking even Grand Prairie, this is talking your neighborhood park that's with a few blocks, hopefully, of where you currently live. Those estimates go from $940,000 to over $3 million. And this is in $2,019, not necessarily what we're currently looking at now, which we all know has increased far more. So growth projections, I know we've talked about this quite a bit. In the next 10 years, Albany is expected to grow by over 10,000 residents, another 4,000 employees. There are nine additional parks outlined in master plans that are currently in the works right now between East Albany and South Albany. In fact, I got to participate in the, I'm participating in the East Albany project, and I was in there with you, Mayor. We were going, looking through plans, and they have these beautiful right-parian corridor trails. The only way those are ever going to be paid for is if we pay for them through SDCs. If we don't, people are going to be coming to these areas thinking that they're going to be getting what the rest of Albany has. But if we don't have SDC dollars, they're essentially going to be moving to park deserts because we physically won't have the money to put them in. So the plans that we have developed won't actually look like the, what the reality is. So yeah, this just kind of goes to show what's available. I do want to mention that with this methodology, I'll talk about it in a second, there is something called SDCRs, which are reimbursement dollars. Right now, we can only collect improvement, which is the new stuff. If we start collecting reimbursement dollars, when a park went in and it had 100 people in the community, in the neighborhood, and now it has 400, there's a difference between its capacity use. If we start collecting reimbursement dollars, some of the SDC funds we get will actually be able to go and improve our current existing parks to bring it up to the level that, you know, the neighborhood now requests. So our updated methodology, I didn't want to attach dollars to this at all because it, they inevitably come intertwined, but I want to stress that tonight you're just, and hopefully Wednesday, if it stays on the agenda, you're just considering the methodology, not actual dollars, they're two separate conversations. So the updated methodology, when the FCS Group went back, they found that actually people per household does drive usage. People in smaller houses, you know, 500 to 1,000 square feet do use parks, and our trail system, less than people who are living in a 25,000-square-foot house. 20, 2500.
That's a Nick House.
Woo, 2,500-square-foot house, sorry. With that says, it starts to taper off. After you get to 20, after you get to 3,000 square feet, park usage stays about the same, doesn't matter if it's 3,000 square feet, 4,000, 25,000 square feet, theoretically, they're using the park the same. So, this is a scaled approach, and it's calculated specifically to each square foot. So on here, these are just examples, but when a developer comes in and they say, I have a, my square footage is going to be 1,624 square feet, we would be able to type that in and get a very specific number so that they're not having to pay any less or any more just because they're in a, in a, you know, a tier. So the percentage will be based on actual rates, not to exceed the maximum allowable. And once again, we'll discuss rates at a different time. But this new methodology does address the request that council posed last January to come back and make sure that smaller houses do have a discount compared to the larger houses. Once again, and, and, yes.
Counselor, any other questions? Okay.
All right, I'll talk your ear off about this. So our updated methodology, here are some of the other changes besides the fact that, you know, we are scaling so that smaller homes have smaller fees, larger homes have larger fees. Once again, we would implement a reimbursement fee. So some of these SDC dollars that'll be coming in, we'll be able to make improvements on our $5 million backlog. Excuse me, which is, ooh, yes.
So currently, we have no reimbursement fee on parks?
We have zero.
Only on other public works?
Yes, that is something that has not been updated in the 29 years.
Thank you.
Wow.
So, just that, even if rates stayed the same, that would be huge, as that allows us to access a pool of money to make improvements to a system that sorely needs it. It does include an SDC non-residential development fee. I'm saying help spread the burden or love, because depending on what side of the coin you're on, it's, it's either or. But employees also do use services. I know that's something that's come up and Doug can chat about it more. We, none, nobody on any community has people out there click counting in every park to say, hey, do you live here, are you an employee? And so it's based on the act, the possibility, and that's how it's factored on all those other communities that use non-residential. It's the exact same equation that we're using here. But people do go for a walk or maybe eat lunch in the park, they go and swim laps in the morning, or they go to a River Rhythms concert in the evening. This is not a requirement, non-residential fee. If this is the tipping point and the no-go, if council says, you know what, we don't want to do a non-residential fee, we go back to FCS, they change that a little bit, and it just makes the housing prices go up a little bit more as there's fewer people to offset the same cost.
I know we touched on this earlier, but I need to hear it again. The non-residential, that would apply to new businesses going in, not an existing business who all of a sudden has an additional fee slapped on them because someone might take a walk?
Nope, it would be brand-new construction only.
Okay, thank you.
And teleworking has come up because, well, days of COVID are different. And we, we trust that the developer is taking that into account, that they know how many people are going to telework when they put in their development permit. So they're not going to pay for this huge building that only four people are going to work in. No, you're being, you're, you're paying for the square footage that you're going to need with the onsite employees that you have. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay. Annual indexing to match the CPI, I'm really thankful that Rob gave the tutorial on that because he is far more eloquent than I am. But annual indexing, we have not come back to have an index since 2001. So it's only been changed, updated five times since 1993, and 21 years ago was the last time we had any inflationary increase. And so, yeah, if we go ahead and say that we're going to do annual indexing, we'll still come back to council, just like Chris is doing right now, to say, hey, this is the proposed increase. But it allows us to do that, and it just makes it so that developers are able to plan ahead, it's more efficient, it's methodol, it's, it, it just ensures that we don't have massive increases like we're, we're looking at right now. And then in general, and talking about the max allowable, I know it's scary, but that is a situation where growth pays for growth. It's so that no additional fees get, well, fees or projects get tacked onto the general fund that don't need to be there.
So, Director?
Yeah.
Why hasn't it been addressed since 2001?
I think it's a complicated topic that maybe just...
I mean, because everything else has been adjusted, you know, since then. I'm just curious about that, because I look at, I look at having to sell parks and close parks, not maintain parks, but it hasn't been addressed since 2001.
Maybe my next slide will help to address it.
I hope so.
So what I hear all the time is, we're under resourced. Why would I give you more money when we can't take care of what we have? I see those as two separate conversations, in all honesty. Because when people move to Albany, and specifically the south and east areas, they're coming because it's going to be livable, it's going to be equitable. Economic development, I heard at a Rotary meeting two weeks ago, we had a person from the owner of Lazarus 3D say that work-life balance plays a key role of why they're here, being able to go out, take a walk, and access nature. At some of our East Albany plans, we had folks from LBCC and ElCog saying that, yeah, access to trails is what is, it makes a community viable and helps to generate new business. We're protecting open spaces. If development just continues to come in, then you're not going to have any green space, you're not going to have any trees. So if we don't do it, who else will? Enhanced bike and pedestrian connectivity, all of these seem, all of these things are themes that are mentioned in the current strategic plan that council's going through, the master plan, and even the If I Were Mayor contest, which I put one of the posters down there, as it says, more trees, more trails. So, when the time comes for us to build, we need to actually have enough money in there to actually... So when the time comes for us to build, we need to actually have enough money in there to actually do something. Oh, sorry. So that's why we should be investing in new parks. It will come to a time when council, either this one or in the future, will have to make very hard decisions as to do we continue to invest in our Parks and Recreation System? Because any reductions at this point, we can't keep up. But I would hate to think that we're just going to close up shop and say, well, it's as good as it's going to be and we're, you know. I, I, I believe that parks play a vital part into healthy communities.
And we agree with you on that.
So. So, sorry, once again, I got on my soapbox. It's just, it's, we play a major part in our, and, and I hope that we will be able to continue to do so. So in talking about the methodology, the Parks and Recreation Commission, we brought this to them in May and they voted five to zero to approve and recommend to council the methodology. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the updated methodology.
I'm, I'm just checking here first, always check over there. Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes, Commissioner, the methodology, I think, in, by design is sound. But my concern is scalability, AKA what we're trying to do with the sewer water. I would go so far as to say, at whatever rate ends up being, that it should be scaled differently, yours and the other side in that if we're trying to give any kind of an incentive to builders or developers to make a, you know, build smaller homes, and it may not be much, maybe jump in the bucket, rather than you've got it just, you know, a small dollar amount. I mean, on, on the lowest size homes, 1,000, 1,200 feet, make it absolutely zero. And then crease it at the, at the high end. The people at the high end.
They don't care.
They're absolutely not going to care what the pricing is of those SDCs because they're going to buy those homes anyway, regardless. But if we're trying to give any kind of an incentive, even though if it's minimal, I think we ought to make it as meaningful as we can within the limits of, you know, trying to keep everything else equitable, so.
So, so what would be the impact if we did something like that?
So I might have to tap into Doug on this one. So just to make sure that I'm clear. So potentially, we know that 3,000 square feet is whatever the highest charge is going to be. But instead of a thousand square foot house charging 60%, you're saying maybe even drop it down to like 25 or 30?
No, I'm thinking, I'm taking 500,000 feet or less, make it zero.
1,500 square feet or less?
Yeah, no, no.
Thousand square feet.
A thousand square feet.
Make it zero. And then add that at the top, the top 2,500 to 3,000 plus.
So for thou, so for anything under 1,000 square feet, your recommendation would be to make it zero, knowing that then that's going to push the SDCs higher for.
Higher end homes.
Everything else.
And those higher, just keep the middle, the middle. But you're going to balance it very highly on the folks that can very easily more afford it.
My, my only question is that, is that defensible?
And Doug, I'm looking to you.
I'm, I'm afraid I cannot second the motion because as I believe the mayor.
You weren't asked to second the motion.
The, the scaling that is presented in the report, and I'm referring to the June of 2021 report, was carefully crafted to be proportionate to the occupancy statistics that we were, that we were able to use. So the, the scaling that you see in front of you now on the slide relates to the average number of occupants in a house by those sizes. So to, so I would, I would hesitate and certainly could not recommend that, that you just arbitrarily scale it so that, you know, 500 square feet goes to zero and then the slope is much steeper up to the highest level.
I, I agree with what you're, what you're saying there, but my concern is how do we give any kind of an incentive to the developers to build the smaller homes, which we're incredibly short on? And it may not be much, but if it helps build two or three more of them, I don't think a developer is going to lose out a dime on any of the bigger homes because those are going to sell to the people that can afford those. They already are. That's not a problem. That's just my only concern.
Counselor Smith?
I just wanted to comment that the Parks SDCs are only one of the SDC fees that we charge to new development. Should we make them all zero? No. Should we make this one zero? I don't think so. I really, I, I'm a big fan of the written word, as everybody knows, but I really appreciate hearing you explain your memo in person. The more you talk about something and the more you read over it, the more it boils down into jam that's, that's easier to swallow. And so I, I appreciate the, the description of the methodology, which, which now makes very good sense to me. I, it, just an editorial comment about why haven't we done this sooner? Why has this been simmering at the 2001 level all this time? In my experience here, the Parks Department has been treated as an ugly stepchild for a long time. And we can, well, let's spend the money here, let's put the money in the police department, the fire department, anything but Parks. And Parks, the Parks Department has graciously said, okay, we'll try to make it work. And somehow they've made it work. But what they, what they have done is kept us recreating, kept us entertained, kept things looking good up to a point. Some things don't get done. That's why we've got that backlog of maintenance and services that, that just are, are sitting there because the council of the past was not willing to invest in the Parks Department and treat it like a regular essential city service.
Kind of like low hanging fruit.
Yeah, well, there's not any fruit left on those branches anymore. And I, I think this, this is just long overdue. And I, I do, I need to remind, thank you for, Director Bailey gave a wonderful description of what SDCs are in very plain language and without apology for this won't get done if we don't have that money. I'm, I'm fine with this. And we are not talking about fees tonight. We are talking about how we, how we charge the fees, what we're charging for and what it's based on. That's, it's the recipe, we haven't bought the ingredients.
So can, thank you very much, Counselor Smith. Can you please refresh the reimbursement piece of this?
Sure. Oops, say that, sorry.
Refresh the reimbursement explanation. The reimbursement?
So yes. So re, at this time, like I said, the amount that we collect is limited to a very specific list. If we wanted to put a new park downtown, they wouldn't pay for it because we already have more than enough parks in that area. So it has to be a very specific amenity. Well, I'm right there with you, Counselor Olson, but according to the thing, it's got a, it's got a pretty dense patch. And so if we wanted a specific sport, you know, people have said, well, can't we put it towards the waterfront? Actually, we can only put about $150,000 towards a splash pad at the waterfront. It won't even fund the full splash pad because legally it's not allowed to. So it's very restricted what our current dollars can go towards. But if we have the reimbursement fee, then Henderson Park, which is, we're finally slated to, to do construction on it, down off of Eighth and Calipuya. That park hasn't been touched in 50-plus years. A portion of SDC dollars could have gone towards that to make that improvement a reality far sooner than having to wait a couple decades.
That's the reimbursement piece?
Yep. Because we're, we're bringing the quality up to the amount of folks that live in the community now and that are using it compared to when it was originally installed.
Kim, I have.
Thank you.
I have a question. I don't know, it may be for you, it may be for the consultant, but how, what's the methodology for apartment complexes when it comes to Parks and Rec fees right now on this?
What our current methodology is?
Or in.
Or in this one?
Yeah.
I'm going to go, so Doug, I believe this is correct. It would be the total square footage of the building and then it would be up to the developer to, to spread the love.
I'm going to need to, I'm going to need to have the counselor repeat the question because he trailed off there.
Yeah, I couldn't hear it either.
Just wanted to know what the methodology was for apartment complexes when it comes to Parks SDCs?
Apartment complexes.
I'm, I'm not sure I follow the question.
So, okay, we have a, we have an apartment complex that is 50,000 square feet. Are we basing a, a SDC fee off of 50,000 square feet or do we base that off of?
Oh, 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 okay. I, I apologize for, for my density there. So the, this is a great point and because it's something that we haven't mentioned yet. And that is the scaling that, that we have worked so hard to present to you really applies only to single-family residences. And so for other dwelling unit types, we, we would revert to the calculations that you'll find in, in table 13 of the June 2021 report. So for example, the, the, the maximum SDC per demand-adjusted user was $4,088, which, which translated before scaling, before scaling, to a single-family residence charging $7,525. And a multifamily residence, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Multifamily is $7,525 per dwelling unit. That's the maximum allowable. That's not, not necessarily what you would have to impose. But that's based upon 1.84 demand-adjusted users per dwelling unit. So there's no scaling there for multifamily.
And so, and the reason I was asking this kind of based off of Counselor Smith's question or her, her comment about not going to zero for anything under 1,000 square feet. And my concern was if we had apartments and we had a 300-unit apartment complex in North Albany, but all of the apartments were under 1,000 square feet, would that mean that that entire complex paid $0 in park fees?
So, so the, the methodology that, that, that we have calculated for you does not do any scaling for multifamily because it quickly gets complicated. I was, I just had this conversation a few nights ago in Milwaukee where we had a very robust discussion about under what circumstances could we bring scaling to multifamily units? And, and you can do it, but you have to think about things that, that are difficult to think about. Like what do you, how do you allocate common areas and, and things like that? So, so the methodology that has been presented to you has a fixed multifamily SDC per dwelling unit based upon average occupancy of multifamily dwelling units.
But that doesn't apply to apartments. Am I understanding that correctly? Multifamily meaning like a duplex, triplex, quad, whatever, but not apartments?
No, and apartments.
And apartments, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Smith, Johnson, excuse me, Counselor Johnson?
Kim, I'm going back to the reimbursement thing. All right. So is it on, okay, so you have an area. Now are you talking about like new building in the area? Or are you talking about people moving into the area? I don't understand where the reimbursement comes in by the area, is already the area, so.
And Doug, let me know if I'm wrong. So it doesn't necessarily have to be folks moving into the neighborhood by Henderson Park. The dollars that are coming in from growth and development elsewhere are able to help go towards bringing that up to, to its level.
So it's basically reallocating. Okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
I thought.
How can we fit more people in there?
If there's no place for a new building, how are you going to do that?
Yep.
All right, that's.
So I, I think you might want to add definitions next time because I was thinking, right? Who's going to pay that? My next question is who's going to pay that? Because if I know the people in Henderson Park area, if we told them we're going to tack on another five grand, you know, 25 bucks a month to reimburse the park improvements, we're going to have a mutiny on our hands, so.
But it's only for new development, not.
No, no, she said.
The reimbursement.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, now that I understand it, reimbursement comes from new development that they allocate money for. Thank you.
Would, would it be, Kim, would it be helpful for me to give a quick overview of reimbursement fees?
Was that, is that helpful?
Sure, why not?
I'll go ahead and stop sharing.
Go for it.
So, so an SDC can have up to two main layers. The SDC that you charge new development, there can be, there can be two layers in the total amount that you charge. The one that most people think about when they think about SDCs is the improvement fee. That's the portion of the SDC that is based upon a project list and you determine how much of that is for growth and you add up all the eligible costs. That's your improvement fee. And that's what most people think about when they think about an SDC. But another layer that you can charge for is that what's called a reimbursement fee. And you're able to charge a reimbursement fee when you can document that you have available capacity in your existing infrastructure and you can make development buy into that capacity through a reimbursement fee that is part of the larger SDC. And so that, that is something now based upon our calculations and where level of service is going in Albany, and this is all, this is all documented in gory detail in the report. But there is some available capacity now that, that allows you to have a reimbursement cost basis of just a little over $9 million, which is, which is a fraction of the, of the improvement fee. But the nice thing about having a reimbursement fee, as, as Kim has already said, is that you can spend that money, assuming that you account for it separately. You can spend that money on projects that don't necessarily have anything to do with growth. You can spend that reimbursement fee money on just straight-up replacement projects where you could not do that with improvement fee dollars. So that it's more, it's a more flexible SDC when it comes time to spend.
Counsel, you okay with that explanation? You ready to go?
Question, I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. Did, did the gentleman just say that you can't use money in the improvement to replace like old park equipment?
That's correct.
How is that not an improvement?
The, the, the gen, oh, oh, yeah, the gentleman did say that. An improvement fee is, is for a capacity that serves future users. And replacing something is not adding capacity. Replacing something of similar size with similar capacity is, you are, you are certainly extending the useful life, but that is, useful life is not the same thing as capacity.
So improvement is more brand new, not new equipment or, or refabbing something, but an actual brand new project.
New, new capacity.
New capacity, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Johnson?
We're going back to the scaling it down to where you have 1,000 or 500 feet having no SDCs. I'm not for that because you ha, I mean, that's discrimination. I mean, the whole thing is just not right. Everybody has to pay their thing and they're still going to put it into the price of the house and it's going to be less now that we're going to, if we decide to change this, you know, to the scaling. But I just don't agree with that.
I, I don't think, go ahead.
On that note, because I thought that was kind of brilliant myself, that to me would incentivize. If you didn't take it down to zero, which we're being told, no, 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 we can't do that, that's not fair, that's not right. What if, what if you took it down to like 10%? So there, because that's still an, I'm just trying to figure out how we could incentivize if we want smaller homes. How, how else do you incentivize it? I mean, I, outside of making it more affordable to a builder or a buyer.
And I believe whatever that, oh, go ahead.
That you, you want me to go?
Yes, please.
You're, you're taking, you're taking a risk. You're, and you're taking a risk that I cannot advise you to take. The, the methodology that, that we're, we've presented to you has the scaling carefully tied to average occupancy based upon census data. And so I, I would not, I would not want you to stray too far from that because then it does, it does look like you are not collecting equitably. And, and we could, we could think, we could think through a couple of scenarios. You know, what, what if we made, so let's imagine that we're going to, we're going to do this. We're going to, we're going to take the smallest dwelling units down to, you know, 10% or 0% of the maximum charge. Let's think through a couple of scenarios of how you'd do that. Let's think through a couple of scenarios of how you'd do that. Number one, you could do that in a, in a revenue-neutral way, which means that you severely reduce at the, at the smaller end, and you increase at the upper end to raise the same amount of money in total. Well, if you do that, your larger, your larger dwellings are now being, you are now over-collecting, you are collecting beyond their impacts, beyond their average occupancy, and that's, that's a no-no. They could, they could object to that, and they could win. So another scenario is you severely restrict the SDCs at the lower end, but you don't increase at the upper end. So now you're just foregoing revenue. But by foregoing revenue, there are projects that must necessarily be not constructed, and now you're not able to fulfill the plan, and someone could object to that as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Olson?
Dick, can you speak into the microphone?
Turn it on. Yes. And I'll say it again, people who have the best ability to pay are often the biggest complainers. So, Ray, I think you're wrong, but the guy who can pay is, he's not going to complain. That's not what I have seen over the years.
Okay, so can we address the employee thing?
Yes.
Why would you charge somebody that works here but doesn't live here SDCs for their park, for parks?
Sure.
So you got, so somebody that works at Fred Meyer, they live in Lebanon, they come in, they have a 30-minute lunch, they eat inside the building, and go home. Why would we want to charge Kroger for that? Or a new building, so a new store.
Got it.
Store X, right?
There is, and Doug, I'll let you take the official term or the official words on it, but there is an opportunity for them to recreate here because it's closer to their employment. So they, like I said, they might come in and swim laps in the morning, and at lunchtime they might go visit their kid at one of our, you know, youth programs. Afterwards, they might go to River Rhythms. So there are, they are interacting with the system in a way, you know, they might walk on a trail every day during lunch or during their 15-minute break. It isn't guaranteed that they are, but there is an opportunity that they would be able to access recreational and park amenities. And, and some communities have decided that that opportunity makes it favorable for them to pay a fraction of SDCs. All right, Doug, take it away with the real stuff.
So, oh, not, not, it's not going to be any better than yours. So, so a quick clarification, we are not charging individuals, so we don't, we don't know who's going to end up working at the Kroger anymore than we know who's going to move into the single-family residence when we charge them an SDC. So this is not, this is not about individuals at all, these are, these are all averages.
I understand that, but say, for example, we have a big piece of industrial land that we want somebody to buy and build, and we say, well, you're going to have 1,000 or 1,500 or 1,500 employees, and because you're doing that in the city of Albany, and a percentage of your people don't live here, we're going to tack on an additional SDC charge because they might use a park. Wouldn't that serve at some level to disincentivize somebody to move here, to build here?
So, okay, so, so a quick response and then, and then a longer explanation. The quick response is, is SDCs are not about incentives, SDCs are about equitable cost recovery. So that's why, that's why SDCs are hard, hard to play around with as much as you might want to, to get the incentives you want. That's because the law requires that we craft them so that they recover cost equitably from those who incur the cost. So when it comes to non-residential park SDCs, the decision tree starts like this. The city council begins with a decision about the demand on parks that non-residential development places. Now, you can decide that non-residential development does not place any burden on the park system. In that case, the appropriate parks SDC for non-residential development would be zero. And you can absolutely make that finding. We wanted to make it available to you, build it into the calculations, just in case you found that non-residential development does create additional demand for parks facilities. If you decide that non-residential development does create additional demand for park facilities, the next question is, how much? And that's where you see those tables in the report about hours of availability, and some of these folks are, you know, how many people are living there and working there and not living there or not working there. And you see all of this census data aggregated whose sole purpose is to come up with a relative measure of how many employees does it take to equal the demand of one resident? And that then creates the basis for equitable allocation between residential development and non-residential development. And that, the, the, the way that you allocate that is as much art as science because the city, the city council and staff have to, have to have some idea of just how much use there is or potentially is by these non-residential customers. I'm going to stop there.
Mayor?
Counselor Kaptanewski and Counselor Smith?
Mayor, I will suggest that any development of any kind creates demand on all of our services, and therefore it's, I think it's absolutely correct that they should also help pay for those services.
Counselor Smith?
The only other thing I could add is that I watched a interesting newscast last night regarding the class of 22 college graduates who have at least a minimum of two jobs to choose from when they graduate. They're in bidding wars to be, employers wanting to hire them. And it's not just about money. It's about, work-life balance is in the top four categories of things that people are looking for when they're looking for a job. They want to have a decent place to live, and that can mean affordable, it can also, but affordable is part of comfort and happiness. And, yeah, they care about their lives, they don't care about, their bank account is not all of it. And to come to a community and get funneled into a building and run around like a rat in a maze all day and then go to wherever home is with nothing to look at on the way or to think about, to, no place to go on your lunch hour if you can, it's all, it's all a package. Human beings are not automatons, and they don't, they, it's ridiculous to think, I guess, that we care about people's feelings. And we, what we want them to be happy when they work here, we want them to shop here, we want them to live here ideally. And parks are, are one of those, they're forgotten too often. As I said before, it's a subliminal thing, you want it, because you want to know it's there. And I think it's perfectly, that's just the cost of doing business and treating your employees fairly, to contribute to the cost of those types of life amenities. It's a small price.
Counselor Bartholomew, you have something?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, I, I was, before I lived here in Albany, a commuter, because I worked in Albany. And I would go to the park every day at my lunch hour to take my walk. And so I was like, well, I'm one of those, 1, 10% of residents, or I was. And then, also because I lived in Corvallis, I had access to a lot more forests that were close by. And so Albany has been, less, has less of that here, and I think it's important that we have those kind of amenities of parks because we need that kind of accessibility here that is not built in to our current environment.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson, you're smiling at me?
Yeah. I won't go there. This might be a question for Doug, and I'm sorry, but I think we're probably pretty close to being done with this. Is the scaling that we're planning, is it equitable? Are we going to come out even? Are we going to come out behind? Are we going to come out ahead? What do you think?
Ah, those are two different questions. So the first, the answer to the first question is yes, it is equitable because it's based upon occupancy and human beings use parks, so it's equitable. The second question is, is it, if I can rephrase it, is it, you're asking, is it revenue-neutral? Would you, would you collect the same amount of money as if you, as if you charged all single-family residences the same fee? I don't know the answer to that. The answer lies in the mix of housing that actually gets built.
So, so if there's, what we're looking for is small, affordable houses, then you're not going to get as much SDCs as if you have, say, the even charges, or if there's more small houses like people want as opposed to larger houses. So basically, it's just going to be a kind of a crapshoot.
It'll also depend on when we do have the fee-setting conversation, what that base level fee is.
So, so Counsel, would you like to see this again?
I'll have it on Wednesday, won't we?
Yeah, bring it on Wednesday, bring it on Wednesday as scheduled.
Is it okay with you to talk about it again?
Yeah.
I've got nods, thank you, I'll see you Wednesday.
Well, unfortunately, you don't get rid of me quite yet. So, as I got to tee up the next conversation, so I apologize.
You're killing me there.
Do we need a bathroom break? I mean, the pregnant lady's going to ask everybody, so, okay. So that's methodology, that is what's coming back on Wednesday for the public hearing and hopefully a vote. With that said, I am here to do a little bit of information gathering from you all now to kind of get some feedback so that I can come back in June with proposed rates. So, we got this. Okay, so as we chatted before, we know that we have a lot of projects that are on our master plan. And once again, this slide just gives some ideas as to how much these improvements are going to cost. Once again, we have 2.8 in the, in the bank right now. So, you know, a three-acre park could be any, a three-acre park could be anywhere from $1.2 million. Heck, even a part of a trail is $600,000. So just thinking about the types of improvements that are out there. So our current fees, once again, we've gone over this before, have not been updated since 2001. The rates shown here are the 2019 rates, which we were using a 1,500-square-foot house. In actuality, the average home is a 22.5-square-foot house, to be exact, 2,248 square feet. And so as we looked forward and trying to figure out what recipe we should bring back, or what ingredients we should bring back for a rate, we're going to start talking about specifically what we would charge comparable to other communities for the same square footage. So comparable communities, we chose ones that are in the valley because we know Portland's a far different beast, and so is Bend and the coast. So, once again, for a 22.5-square-foot house currently, we are charging $2,433. As you can see, the average is actually $5,000 when you take into account, we are the cheapest by far from Corvallis, Eugene, Lebanon, Springfield, and Salem. So we had a 90-minute lengthy discussion at the Parks and Recreation meeting back in May, and the commission gave me some direction to hopefully come to you all. And so they approved a motion to encourage the city council to consider max allowable as one option because we know that there's substantial need. But at the very least, they are asking council to minimally set a rate for the average-sized dwelling at no less than or equal to the average rate of comparable communities so that that way we are at least on equal footing as our, our neighborhood sisters. So you have two options that, like Doug mentioned, this is just two options on a menu that reflect what staff and the Parks and Recreation Commission think would be helpful instead of having you start from scratch. So one would be a ramping option, just like Chris talked earlier about how they had a five-year ramping strategy to get to max allowable. We can do the exact same thing for Parks and Recreation so that in year one, a 1,000-square-foot house would charge 3,947, and by year five, it would be 6,578. That is a fraction of what the actual max allowable cost is, which is at the bottom, year five of a 3,000-square-foot house, which would be 10,941. So it is a, it is, it is a large jump, and it is a large jump that will increase every year over the next five years. But this gets us as close to growth paying for growth as possible because in order for us to complete everything in our master plan, we would need 100% 3,000-square-foot-plus houses from the get-go. And so there's our, we're already missing some money because of the ramping and the scaling. So then the other option, option B, which I believe will be more palatable to probably everyone, is knowing that we are going to have the average of comparable communities. So if we set a 22.5-square-foot house at the average, which I showed you before between the other communities, at 5,110, then as we scale up and down, that, you know, those numbers differ, but they would max out at $5,605 for a 3,000-square-foot house. So this, this is what the Parks and Recreation Commission would ask for as a minimum, knowing that, you know, we want to remain a competitive community, but that we do have a lot of work that needs to be done. So you could throw out at this point an option C or a D if you want us to come back with some additional calculations, but based on staff recommendation and what we've heard from the commission, these are the two things that we wanted to bring as the, as our, as our base for you to tweak. And then the hope is that you'll be able to provide me with some additional feedback and that I would come and post and all that kind of good stuff back in June to actually have an official rate-setting meeting where we would have a resolution.
So wouldn't we have to do public notice for that?
There is, I believe, a seven-day notice, so it's much shorter.
So would be the June 22nd meeting, you'd be coming back?
I'm, I am hopeful for June 8th, but if you want me to bring it back to the sixth work session for us to have a more in-depth discussion, I'm more than happy to. But I would hope to do it earlier rather than later for personal reasons. But if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. So you can, so.
Counselor Bartholomew?
I was just wondering if these two different methodologies create a different, obviously, income intake?
Yep. And so, like I said, even if we pass option A, which seems incredibly aggressive, we're not going to be able to fund everything on our list. But instead of doing a funded and unfunded list, we just keep everything on it so that that way as money appears, we're able to pick and choose projects as opposed to saying, well, we can't do it because it's on an unfunded list. Sorry. So yes, there will be a difference. With option B, that gap is going to be greater. We're not going to be able to do as much as we could with option A, but maybe that's what is acceptable to the community currently.
Counselor Smith was next, and Counselor Novak and Counselor Kaptanewski.
Yes. I had a question about, Table 6 on Page 17 of the agenda under expansion projects, when you're talking about master plan and work that needs to be done. That includes, sorry, the multipurpose recreation and senior center at $10 million, is that still on the list?
It would still be on the list, so if we don't go up to the max allowable, that, that would not be an option. So, so that, that wouldn't be probably a funded project. So, so that, that wouldn't be probably a funded project within the next 10 years.
So, what has been done with the Riverfront Community Center is a stopgap?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Novak.
Thank you. I was wondering if you could bring us back on Wednesday, the difference between option A and option B in terms of income?
I could...
If that made sense.
No, it totally does. I would, we could potentially pull the square footage from development for the last year and see if we had development the exact same as this year, what those gaps would be. I can work on that.
Yeah.
I don't think you can do it by Wednesday, though.
I don't, I won't be able to, but, but that could come back if we wanted to add this to the June 6th work session. I would be able to take a look at that.
Yeah, but then the other problem is, you have to figure in the current economic state, which is vastly different than it was even a year ago. So, so much for that brilliant thought.
It's, because we, we thought about looking at that, and, but we can't necessarily guarantee that the same-sized houses are going to be built, and so, it's, it, I agree. A little mind-blowing.
I have a question for you. The concert, the concert family came in and presented a mixed density. Can you use that as an example? Forty-seven, or 41 small homes, 120 apartments? That could be something that we could capture both with multiple...
Just kind of like a case study of what the difference would be?
So, we can do it with both plans, and show us the, you can show us the delta from that one, because it has apartments in it, it also has smaller homes.
That's brilliant, I think, if you don't mind my saying.
And it's public record, so...
Yeah, it's going to happen.
I can do that, and maybe even by Wednesday. We'll see, so...
It'd be a good comparison for us, right?
Yeah, it'd be a great comparison.
Yeah.
Brilliant.
So, oh, go ahead.
Thank you. So, Counselor, are you finished, Counselor?
Yes.
I think this is probably a question for city attorney, and I think I'm going to go down, go down swinging on it. Equitability on scaling is that, I'm inferring from what you said, that if we had it not very closely balanced, somebody could make a complaint that would have a legal standing that would be able to throw it out, or, because it is not balanced?
Equitable.
Equitable. Okay, I'm done then. I went down.
We did that, we did that on purpose, by the way.
I heard it.
But yes.
So, so, somebody would go to Luba on this then, right? Would it be a Luba case, or would it be?
No, it, this wouldn't be a land use case. This is most likely, I mean, most likely this would go to Circuit Court. It'd be a, it would be a Circuit Court challenge.
Okay. Okay. Any other counselors? Counselor Olson, you have anything?
I hate to say this, but I see predictions of a recession coming in our nationwide economy. And I'm wondering if we have to take on a really expensive thing like this, so, I am on the fence on this.
Well, we'll know more information as far as the economy will be smarter on June, June 6th. Hopefully, we'll have more data then. The counselor, I think, wants to hear if you come back on June 6th with this?
Sure. So, on the 6th, I'll bring back the comparables based on the one community. I'll still bring back this option A and B, and at that time, we would have conversation with more feedback, so that hopefully I could come back by the June 22nd for a fee-setting decision.
Does that work for counsel?
Sounds good.
Awesome. Thank you very much for the marathon session. Greatly appreciate it.
Jay Jobber was claiming everything.
Thank you, Doug.
Next on the agenda is world, ward map boundary changes for Gabe Shep, Gabe Shepard. 50 to 56 in your packet. So, you guys do know that Gabe is also a Corral City Councilor, you know that? Okay.
I am not here in that capacity.
I know that. I'm just letting them know, okay?
All right, I'm pulling up the slideshow real quick. I don't have an extensive slideshow for you, I just have the maps that I can pull, pull up and put on your screens. Put that up. All right. Good, it's evening, good evening, counsel. I don't have an extensive presentation to give you, I just want to draw your attention to Pages 51 to 54 of your packet, where you can find three proposals that staff drafted that use census data to determine if the ward boundaries for Albany abide by state and federal law and case law. Page 55 of your packet analyzes these numbers and evaluates the proposals. You can look at Page 56, which compares current population to 2010 census population. I do want to emphasize that there is an option to not have any changes to the wards. We are within 10%, which is the maximum allowable. We are at 9.87% for Ward, Ward 2, but that's within 10. So, we, staff is looking for a direction on what to do next. There are a few options. One is call what we have right now good, and do, make no changes to the wards, and we won't have to come back to you with anything else in the future. Another one is give us guidance on if one of these, one of these options to change, if you like one of those options, and we would come back with an ordinance to change it. And the other is to make different suggestions, that we would be able to come back with a different map based upon what you, what you are looking for. Just to answer a couple of questions that I've gotten from counselors, we have a resolution on the books, Resolution 3174, that would, well, that sets forth the continuation of representation by city counselors no longer residing in the ward to which they were elected due to the creation of new wards or the revision of ward boundaries. So, what that's saying is, if you are serving out the continuation of a four-year term, and you are redistricted out of the ward you were elected in, you will still serve out the continuation of your term as a ward, as a counselor from your elected ward, but you would need to run for reelection, if, if you so choose, in your new ward. That was from 1992. Another question we got was, can we break up precincts? So, these are, those blocks that we have are precincts that are drawn by the counties, Benton County north, north of the, well, on the other side of the river from where we are now, and then Lynn County over here. The answer is yes, we can break up precincts. It's not recommended. It would cause a lot of work for the Lynn County Clerk, and it may even cost the city money, if they need to hire temps to get in there and go granular. So, it's really highly recommended that we stay at the precinct level. I will say that since the last redistricting, the precincts have, many of the precincts have been combined, so we now have larger, fewer larger precincts, and, which makes more fine movement and switching of, of things a little harder, but that's where we're at right now. So, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions, and I'll be, do the best that I can.
So, first, that was Counselor Smith?
Oh, Gray was ahead.
Oh, right. Counselor, Counselor Kowalski.
Well, it would make for some very interesting election processes in the next few years if we changed it. Right now, we're right under the cusp, so I'm going to go with the adage, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Counselor Smith?
I'm with that, too, but I had one question. When is our next opportunity? Would it be with the next census?
The council can actually consider this at any time. It's typically done around census time, because you have the census numbers that are definite about, about the population. There is the chance, we were talking, I talked with the city attorney about this, there's a chance that someone could come in, in the next few years and say, the wards aren't balanced, and, but the, it wouldn't, it likely would not be a lawsuit or anything like that. It'd just be, they'd be informing the council, and the council would have the opportunity to consider changing them again. And that's if, I will say, if Ward 2, if everything else stays the same, and Ward 2 loses 23 residents, it will be at negative 10%. So, it's, it's kind of, it's a little bit fine there, but there is an option in the future, so there's, you're not bound to any census, the census for change.
Because I could see Ward 3 growing over the next four to five years significantly.
This is a question you may not be able to answer right at the moment, but PSU does an annual population estimate. Are those estimates based on census tracts?
I believe so. I mean, I can't, I cannot be definitive here, but they are, is my understanding that they can be used to draw boundaries and, and things like that. Like, I, that's what we could use. I don't know if they're divvied up by tracts. They probably are, because I don't know how else they would count, but that would be a question I'd have to ask our GIS people upstairs.
Okay. If we know how many vacant houses we have, if there are any in Ward 2, we could try to encourage people to move there, to pad that 23.
That's a good idea.
So, there is, there is a couple of houses available in Ward 3, by the way, so, Ward 2, excuse me. I did meet some people this weekend that are thinking about moving to Albany, and they live in Pendleton. Right. Well, I took a visitor's guide in Illinois, so, yes.
Well, I just had some people come in, a family came into the carousel on Friday, that said they just moved to a home on Belmont.
Nice. And I met a gentleman that works at Oregon State Extension in Pendleton, and said he just moved into Ward 1, because there was, he couldn't, didn't like what he saw in Corvallis. Should we call him?
Maybe we can shift him over to Ward 2. Ward 1, Ward 1 has so much build-out, so many homes and new tracts and everything, like, it's built-out. It's built-out.
You can note that the, that the area, the Benton County part of Albany was the largest increase of any, any precinct over the last year.
I live there, I know. These are my people, I, yeah.
So, I'm, for me, I prefer to stay in Ward 2, I'm just saying. Counselor?
But geographically, Ward 1 is not going to grow anymore, whereas Wards 2 and 3 are going to grow. And I'm wondering about, geographically, and I'm wondering about the, the vacant spot in the southern part of Ward 2. Is that going to be mostly residential?
That's a big PepsiCo property, one of those. That used PepsiCo property.
The big PepsiCo property is on, you see the panel, like, it's the number 018?
Yep.
There's a train tracks that runs through there, the PepsiCo property's right across the way. So, a lot of that's industrial, was on industrial.
But I'm talking about the property that's north of Ellingson Road.
That's the PepsiCo property, isn't it?
Well, I, I'm sorry.
Pepsi's down, further down. Precinct 12.
So, I think that's mostly residential.
Yeah.
And...
South area plan.
If there's extensive growth in Ward 3, I would suggest putting Precinct 48 into Ward 2.
I, I did have a question there. We annexed some land in last year on Lochner Road, and it's not reflected here.
I can, I can check, this was updated with the most recent annexation from a month ago. I, I can talk to our map people about that.
Yeah, because I don't see, I don't see the Lochner Road one we did last year, and the one, most recent, where's that showing me on here? Because I don't see it on any one of the, the lines are still the same from the one hanging on my wall. So, the one we just, that, we haven't actually done the one, the 22-acre one. We did one on Lochner Road, like 30.5 acres, I think it was, last year.
Well, I was, I was speaking to the Honey Grove annexation, I believe that that was included.
Oh, that's the, yeah, the property out there. That's on Three Lakes Road, yeah.
I can ask our GIS team about if that was included, if not. It was probably just, if it's not included, it was probably an oversight, just...
Okay. I would like to see that. If it's, if it has been actually annexed, it should be reflected in the things before we make a decision on this.
But it doesn't have any, if it doesn't have any people in it, it's moot, isn't it?
Well, I just want to see it on the map.
Okay.
Because that's where expansion's going to be.
Or could be.
Well, Counselor Olson was saying, if they continue to grow out there, maybe it's time to shift some of that over to Ward 2.
That'll be up to developers.
Yeah, yeah. So, but we don't have to do anything, we don't have to make any changes today to any of this.
I think, I think, I like what it looks like today, so, that's my opinion.
So, I would say, yeah, in conclusion, I'd just soon leave it alone for the time being, and see what's, what happens in Ward 2 and 3. And one thing I would like to see on a map like this is our urban growth boundary.
Oh, it's on, it is, it is on the one he printed out for us. This is just for this particular thing, it's not, it's normally on there.
Well, if we see the urban growth boundary, we can see where...
Oh, I got you.
...growth can occur without too much strain.
I got you.
Like around Knox Butte.
No, that's city limits.
Which is, I believe, beyond our urban growth boundary.
Yeah, so, the, the urban growth boundary would be in red around the city, correct?
So, we could include the urban growth boundary, and that could be something that's used for context. I will say that it's best practice to not plan for future growth too much when you're making ward maps like this, because sometimes the economy twists and turns, and growth doesn't happen, and then you have an unbalanced ward. That, that's happened in multiple different communities, and so, I, you know, it's, it's good for context, and we can send that out if, if counselors want to see that, but it wouldn't, it, it's something that wouldn't, best, best practices, it's not to take it into consideration when building.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Gabe.
Counsel, we're going to bring this back on Wednesday? Did you have something?
I wanted to understand more what would happen if that precinct that Counselor Olson mentioned at the southern tip of Ward 3 was incorporated into Ward 2. Thank you.
I'd be happy to talk about that. I, I said I'd be happy to talk about it.
Please do.
So, that was one of the considerations we made before coming up with the proposals. One of the biggest issues becomes with contiguousness, because you'd have to start flipping more precincts. It's, there's not a good precinct that you can just swap. If you take Precinct 48 into Ward 2, Ward 2 is now two, has too much population. And if you swap it with something else, you start creating islands around, around that you have to, it starts a cascading effect. Also, I did mention on the last page that it is up to the council to consider where current counselors live when they make those decisions, and there is a current counselor in Precinct 48. So, that would be a consideration that, I mean, I'm not going to tell, but, yeah. So, that is something, that is another consideration. But mostly, it's because it would cause a cascading effect where you'd have to start swapping things, and just, just swapping precincts isn't enough. You have to swap a precinct with more population, with a precinct with less population, and so, in order to rebalance, if, if you're going to rebalance things. So, it, I tried, and that one didn't work, which brings me to, just real quickly, that the proposals that we put in front of you, I went through a lot of iterations of swapping things. You can't really swap anything with Ward 3, because you create islands, because it's just a line on the side, and the only opportunity to swap with Ward 1 without creating a Benton County island was really Precinct 5, because Precinct 16 didn't have the population to do swapping with. So, these were the, these were the options that we came up with.
That's ugly. Okay, thank you, Gabe. I, now I understand what you were doing, and I have no problem staying where we're at right now.
All right. In that case...
Can we just make that decision, or we should bring, do it on Wednesday?
This is enough. We don't need to act, we aren't on the agenda for Wednesday, and just hearing the council wants to keep it the same, I'm, I'll call the counties tomorrow and let them know that we're not changing.
Counsel, thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
All right, thank you very much.
You have your orders? Thank you, sir. Okay. Amend, next on the agenda is amend AMC 13 dot 21 dot 112 subsection A, central area, parking area expansion. Chris Chendell, Page 57 to 61 in your packet. 57 to 61. 57 to 61. Counsel, we've gone past two hours. Do you want to continue on?
Potty break would be great.
Chris, would you be okay with a quick potty break, biological break? Take five minutes, please.
Thank you.
I'm fine.
Somebody requested it. It wasn't for you, it was just a gentleman.
This group, or this area, was supported by the business in that area, including Signs Victory, which is now Second Chance Shelter. It was brought forth because of a high rate of crime that all those locations were seeing, and a need to try to address that. So, during that time, we set a sunset clause, because a lot of councilors felt that this would be just a way to push it to a different area. At that point in time, I stressed that statistically that doesn't happen. At that point in time, I was going through reducing crime seminars and training, and statistically, it just wasn't showing up in any city. But we put in the sunset clause, and we came back six months later, showing that we didn't have a push off of any of that to different areas of the city. We went from 857 calls for service for the seven-month period before the code was passed, to 475 for the seven-month period afterwards, which showed a 55.4% reduction. And just to kind of line up what today is, so, from May of last year to May of this year, we've had 537 calls. So, I could say it's pretty successful continuing. And I know I've talked to the shelter, Second Chance Shelter that's there now, and they very much appreciate it, because they get to see the benefits of that now that they're there.
Chris, can you determine, is there any connection between the pandemic and that reduction in calls that you can discern?
So that's why I wanted to draw up the 21 to 22, just to kind of see, because I felt at that point, more people were like, all right, let's get on with it. Plus, the shelters saw a big uptick. That's why at Helping Hands, they had the tent there. So, I would assume if it was just that, we would have saw actually an increase.
So, you're talking about the second chance that goes around with that street, in front of that. Are we going to address the other part where it goes by Helping Hands?
Yes. So, why we're here today is to expand the area. In working with Emma in that area, we had discussed different ways to help mitigate some of the crime they were seeing. Helping Hands has had some trespassing issues, theft issues, some service issues brought on by the vehicles that are parked along the street. So, this was an idea. And then I went to businesses around the area to ask if they would be okay with it, and all agreed. In your packets, you have a letter from Helping Hands, as well as Elevate Modular. So, just like in the other area, this one's supported by all the businesses, including the shelter, Helping Hands. It's hoped to aid in reducing crime, like we saw in the other area. One thing that me and Emma discussed, and she could speak on it further, is that the people who are engaging in services and are in these shelters are in the shelter. The ones that are on the street aren't wanting to engage, and they are giving this opportunity for people who are newly clean from drugs to have easy access. So, they'll see people go out there, get drugs, and then they're not allowed back in, because you must have clean UA, our UAs, right, to stay there. So, there's people that actually become unhoused based on their easy availability, availability of drugs right in front of the shelter. And another thing that it could help is that with the expansion or change of the shelter as is, they currently have 12 parking spots, and they have eight vehicles that are there. They're going to be reducing down to only eight spots. So, any potential person wanting to engage that has a vehicle, there's not going to be any area for them to park their car in that area. So, when looking at just the total square footage of that area as compared to the last one, so, the previous area, the original area was over 4,000 feet of public streets. This is 1,000, and they equal about 278, or not about, exactly 278, between May 3, 21, and May 3 of 22, which if you multiply that out, is over 1,000, based on what the other area would have been. So, I will let Emma talk about kind of what she sees, since she's there every day, calling us for assistance and her need.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for your time. So, first of all, I just want to share, myself and my team, the people we're serving in shelter and that are living along Ninth Street, we love them, and we want to support them and take care of them. But what we're doing is not working. Currently, how that space is being allowed to be utilized, it is no longer safe for myself, my staff, and the people that we are serving that are saying, I am here, I am ready, and I would like help. Like he talked about, we're seeing an increase in crime, easy access to drugs. And for ourself, when we hit the sidewalk, Helping Hands has no jurisdiction, but we're the staff there, daily engaging with those individuals, trying to de-escalate and help keep people safe. So, having the Central Albany Parking Area permit allows us to create a safe space for our neighbors, for the people that we're serving, and to help hold people accountable. A majority of the individuals that are living on Ninth Street in their vehicles have access to shelter. Yes, there's a handful that have been trespassed, and trespass happens when it is a immediate danger issue, not just for something silly, it's because there's an immediate danger risk to our shelter or the people that we're serving. So, we just want to create a safe space in that area.
Counsel? Counselor Johnson?
Yeah. Okay, so we're talking around Helping Hands. We're talking, so you're going to give up the permit for the vehicles that are able to park there, correct?
That's correct. So, the proposed zone would be from Jackson to the Ninth axis, so at the end of Ninth, from Jackson to the, I don't know what you'd call it, little triangle there that goes on to the Ninth one-way. And then from the Pacific Street overpass to the railroad.
Okay, so, right beside, the houses beside Helping Hands, it's kind of like behind it, have really had problems with, like you say, the trespassing and, you know, doing damage to their property and stuff. Will this help these people? And others, will it, I mean, I guess, I don't know if this is just a parking thing, or is it the whole thing to where they have, they can't be there if they're?
So, it, it will help those people. Most of that residential property, all but one, is owned by Helping Hands already. So, last week I was out there, and Emma didn't even know, one of her people engaging with Helping Hands called me, but he had called because of somebody trespassing, cutting locks, stealing water, stealing power, and this was throughout the night. So, it will help those individuals hopefully not have to deal with that on their property.
Okay, so this, was it a gentleman that called you? Because I talked to a lady, and she, she just, she just, wherever we did the right-of-way.
I know what lady you're talking about.
You know who, okay, so this will help her?
Yes, she will.
Oh, excellent. She will appreciate that.
She called me, too.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, she will appreciate that, because, you know, she said that she was told, well, you could move. Well, no, that's not right. So, okay, perfect. Thank you.
So I had a great conversation with her, and I knew this was coming, so, great. So, please follow up once we figure out what we're going to do, okay?
So, Chris, is this going to be disallowing parking on just the Helping Hands side of that street, or is it on both sides of the street?
It'll be on both. Fidel, it says Fidelity on there, but Elevate Modular, who actually is that Fidelity building, they want this as well. They get all the onsite impacts that Helping Hands do, too.
Counsel, you support? One more question over here?
I did. So, we can't, okay. I think I was, I don't know who I was talking to, the city attorney or somebody, but they're saying that you can't not let the unhoused park there, because, I mean, whatever, you can't do things. What's the word I'm trying to think of? Charge them with anything, or make a move or whatever, because with the law that's, that Boise, whatever law, that says, hey, you, you know, you can't do much to them. So, I can't remember who I was talking to, either Peter or Sean, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't think it was me, but in any event, the Boise case does, does have some impacts on how we have to handle homeless, but in this particular case, it wouldn't prohibit us from doing this, so.
Because it's a public, it's a.
Yeah, it's, it's public right-of-way, that's parking, it's, it's not.
Yeah, so, that, that's kind of my question is, so we have, if we pass this ordinance, and they can't just hang out there, they can't live in their car, you know, in these areas, they can't park there and deal drugs, or all these things that they're doing. So, then, once we pass this, your department will then be able to what? Tow them away?
So, when we did this in the other area, yes, we could tow them away. When we did this in the other area, the original zone, none of that happened. They all left. The biggest concern with counsel at that time, like I said, was that they're all just going to go to another focused area, or we see this huge increase in some area around town, and we didn't see that increase.
So, like I was saying, a majority of the individuals that are living out on Ninth are able to be housed either at Second Chance or Albany Helping Hands. And, and they're not, because they have the ability currently to live in their vehicle. And so, while right being in your vehicle is better than being outside, I see that, I know that. If that option is taken away, then our option becomes available somewhere safe, somewhere with rules and with staff and people that care about them. And hopefully, we start planting that seed and can start moving towards the next step. So, I, I don't think the hope is, we're going to clear all the cars, no one can be here. We want to help them take the next step, and we still want to continue to serve those individuals.
I'm in agreement with that, and I'm glad that Counselor Johnson, is it okay if I reply?
Of course.
Okay. I'm glad that Counselor Johnson brought up Tina Vanderberg, because I went to her home on Saturday, I saw this situation, I heard her story about people peeing through her fence and defecating on her property, and opening her car doors and eating. If she was, had a lapse and didn't lock it, they would get in her car and, and, you know. So, I'm, I think this is a really good idea, and I support it completely. And I am looking at it, not from a get-'em-all, I mean, I guess from both sides. Both, it's safer for them, safer for everyone else, including the only homeowner who owns their home in that area, who isn't owned already by you. I just think it's a really good idea, and I'm glad we're taking this step. I hope we are taking this step.
Thank you, Counsel Novak. Counselor Olson?
Do you have capacity for all the people that are personally hanging out there?
I'd say between myself and Second Chance. Yes, we absolutely do. So, really quickly, Albany Helping Hands is a high-barrier shelter, which means in order to stay with us, you have to be able to pass a UA and follow the rules and be safe. We are missing a group of people. Some of those individuals are on Ninth Street. So, we are working on creating a low-barrier shelter, which will add 30 beds to the space that we have, that will help serve those individuals. space that we have that will help serve those individuals. Second Chance currently runs with some high barrier, but a warming center that is open year round that can meet all of those needs. So I would say, yes, there is space for those individuals between both shelters currently.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that because I had visions of kicking these people out and then they're resorting to living in a tent someplace.
We don't want that.
No, we don't.
I'd suggest bringing this back for Wednesday approval.
Anybody, I think everybody supports bringing it back Wednesday. Is everybody a thumbs up? We'll see you Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Chris, Officer Christian Dell. You're killing me. I know. Amend AM, excuse me, amend AMC thirteen point seven zero, abandoned vehicles, Officer Christian Dell, page sixty-two to sixty-five in your packet.
All right, so this one's more of a procedural and just administrative update. So I was looking at this, we have had this code, sections of it have been updated since two thousand eighteen, but other sections haven't been updated since two thousand, or sorry, since nineteen ninety-one. In those sections, they have outdated quotations of the ORS, which have lowered monetary numbers for when you can and can't get rid of vehicles at a certain rate, an expedited rate when it's abandoned. And also, when, for the first time ever, we had somebody actually read the notice on the back of the car and challenged before it was towed, which we didn't even know it was a thing. So we're trying to streamline that process because that process actually makes it so you have to take them to see a judge, and it's a whole bigger ordeal than it should be. If somebody wants to fight that their car isn't abandoned, that's a quick decision that we can make and take away because it's not abandoned if somebody's talking about it and willing to address the issues that are there. And we could do that rather quickly, and that's what we've always done. So it's taking that section out. They still do have, and why you still see a hearing section in there, is once we do tow a car, they do have the ability to have a hearing on it that tow was just, and that is still in front of the judge.
Counsel?
Bring it back on Wednesday.
Counsel Olson has a question.
Our contract's with AA Towing, so it'll be right off of Marion, or Queen, sorry, Queen and Marion area. It's on Queen, just what would it be, north of Marion? No, no, I mean, yeah, we had passed a private property tow to stop that a while ago, too.
So how, how long has AA Towing had our business?
Oh, I do not know. Marilyn, do you know?
It's been a while. It used to be a rotating contract with, you'd call the next tow company on the list, that's ages ago. Finally, it got to the point, we, we went out for a bid and contracted.
It's been the last almost ten years I've been here.
At least, yeah.
I know that, like Last Resort Towing, they've mentioned interest in getting that or applying for it.
At some point, we should look at that because, you know, we should spread it around.
So we have, so they have one extension that they're still allowed as long as we're satisfied, which from what I've heard today, actually, I had that conversation, is we haven't had any complaints. Next year would be out for bid.
Do we still allow preference toes? If, in the case of an accident, somebody wants another tow company to work?
Yes, so we do. We'll ask them, you know, who do you want to tow? We have, this is our contract. If your insurance wants somebody else, you know, we'll work with that. If it's blocking the middle of the street, and a lot of times insurance will be like two, three hours out, we're gonna, if we can't get into a parking lot or somewhere where traffic can resume, we will tow it that way.
Okay, thank you. So see you Wednesday. See you Wednesday.
Thank you, counsel.
There's got to be a better way. Get back to the beginning. Next on the agenda is business from the council. I'll start on this side, Counsel Johnson.
I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to attend the whole meeting Wednesday night, so I just want to say that I have heard from different people and stuff that they think it is a bad thing to, that we stop charging library fees, because they says, how are we supposed to treat responsibility? I mean, this one mess stopped me at church, and I thought, oh, God, now what? You know, but anyway, I've heard from people and they say, why? I mean, we just, why, why do we have any rules then if, if we're not gonna, you know, have them? So anyway, just want to say that for now, thank you.
Counsel Bartholomew.
At this time, I'll wait till Wednesday.
Okay, Counsel Olson. Counselor Smith.
I'll wait till Wednesday.
Counselor Kopczynski.
Yes, I learned something new about Bird scooters. There are, we had a huge crowd of them being used over the last few days down by the carousel. But apparently several kids have figured out that you can do NASCAR burnouts, et cetera, et cetera, with them, because they're solid rubber tires and there's a lot of torque with an electric engine. So you see, we had all sorts of skid marks all over the sidewalks out there where they were skidding and doing, you know, donuts and everything else on them. I didn't realize they were that powerful. But, so it's something we have to clean up. But I see a lot of kids are just having a lot of fun, a lot of adults. I see a family came down and rented four of them, you know. So it's expanding because the people that were picking them up said that there was two contractors for them, fleet managers, as they call them, that they pulled the plug on one of them because they weren't following the rules. And the other fleet manager has picked them all up, minus five that were stolen off the property of the, the first person, apparently because they hadn't gotten them secured. So...
That's a good reason to let them go.
Yeah, so apparently there's now, he said he's got a hundred and fifteen of them, and just figuring out where to put them, et cetera, et cetera.
Any accidents reported?
Nope. The, the interesting thing, he said that he hadn't realized, and at this point in time, was that he's got a big truck that he uses to pick up and move him around with his nephew and everything else. He's already spent four hundred dollars in gas just doing that. That was an expense he hadn't anticipated for that, so, he said, but it's, it's working out for him, he said, so.
Counsel Novak.
I don't, I'm going to save anything personal to share for Wednesday, but I did want to just mention that I have also witnessed a lot of people flying around on the scooters, some at what I consider to be borderline breakneck speed. So, and I hope no one does break their neck, but I find it just a little bit concerning. Clearly, the young people are having fun. I just think it's a matter of time if they're going super fast, and sometimes in the middle of the road, and sometimes on the sidewalk, and I'm not sure, and, and in the bike lane. I actually saw someone today, they'd gone over the bridge, it looked like, I'm not sure, they were, they were in with the cars. So that was a little heart stoppy, that was on my way down to the restaurant this morning. But I also wanted to mention to Counsel Johnson, as far as those library fees, because I took kind, the same sort of stance that you did, that you want to teach people right from wrong, but I remember Director Iconoy saying that when someone destroys or damages the materials, they're still fined for that. And that made me feel better, and I don't know if you realize that or not, but they are, you can't destroy a book or mess it up or harm it and not be charged.
Oh, I realize that. Yes. It's the responsibility. I mean, if you have to take it back at a certain time, now you don't have, and now it's like, no, fine, so why?
No, I know, and I, I kind of take issue with that too, but they justify it by saying that it costs too much money to collect the fees. So it was kind of defeating the...
I thought also, it never comes back, they bill you for it, right?
Well, I hope so, because that's, to me, that's like stealing.
Just to note, their Bird scooters are speed limited to fifteen miles an hour.
But they, somebody was saying, I'm almost to twenty-four, and I'm, so I don't know, I don't know. They were yelling, I had, there were two kids, they're always, I haven't seen any young, they're always young people, and they were, they were two kids on the same scooter, two couples, two couples, and they were, they were communicating, and I, so I don't know, I'm concerned, I think someone's going to get hurt. But it's probably inevitable, but I'm, I'm the only one who seems to be very concerned about that, and...
We have to be very mindful as drivers that they're out there.
That is a concern also to me, is like if I'm in my car and, and now I've seen that one, the scooter this morning, first time this morning in with the cars, that makes me a little nervous. That makes me, I mean, it all makes me nervous in a way, and maybe I'm just getting too old, but I, 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 I don't know, I'm, I'm not a fan, okay? I'd rather we weren't doing this. I know somewhere someone's checking a box and saying that we're being green, but I'd just as soon not do it personally.
Thank you. Okay, I've got nothing for tonight, other than thank you all for being here today in person. If you can be here a little early, we're going to take a picture on Wednesday.
I forgot.
Five thirty. Thank you. All right, Peter, City Manager report.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, please. Five thirty promptly on Wednesday evening. Just three quick things, to let you know that the, the mayor has signed off on a letter to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, based on staff's recommendation, asking for delays in implementing climate friendly regulations. It's our sense on the staff, at the staff level, that, and it's shared by many cities, that these regulations are being rushed through and haven't been completely thought out yet. So we're on record as asking for more time to, and also, by the way, financial support in terms of staffing and consultant help, because we're also implementing HB two thousand one, HB two thousand three, wildfire planning, and a host of other planning initiatives. We are, you will remember the community conversation series that we had, we're resuming that, and we have one scheduled for six thirty to eight o'clock at Cascade Grill on May thirty-first. That's next week. And, and the, the room at Cascade Grill is limited in its capacity, so we're asking folks in the community to make reservations if they want to attend. And then finally, I think you've, you all remember the email I sent you that five thirty on this Thursday, the library will dedicate, per the council's direction, the Sharon Canopa Garden Room. And that's, again, that's at five thirty at the main library. And that, Mr. Mayor, is all I have, thank you.
And with that, thank you, Peter, I will adjourn the meeting.